Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you. Mrs. Risky, can we please have the roll call tonight?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Shannon.
Present.
Mrs. Erko.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to remind everyone that due to the August 7th primary election, the first August 2018 city council meeting will take place on Wednesday instead of that Tuesday, again beginning at 7:00 PM. And also, the day before, the Sterling Heights Police Department joins law enforcement agencies across the nation for once again hosting the 34th Annual National Night Out, and that is on Tuesday, August 7th, from 6:30 to 9:30 PM at the Sterling Heights Police Department at Dodge Park, Utica Road. Many of you have attended it in the past. Seems to always get a little bigger every year. It's a great display of equipment, all the services that PD has to offer. Our fire department has equipment on display, also our SER team and citizens on patrol, and everything we have to offer in terms of public safety. So, it's a nice night out, and there's all sorts of food and ice cream and other exciting items available, and the kids love it. So, we encourage you to come. Again, that's August 7th, beginning at 6:30 PM. And also, another very popular event is the Treasure Hunters Market, which brings more than 100 sellers together with avid bargain shoppers for a day of fun-filled transactions, and that is occurring in Dodge Park on Saturday, August 11th, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So, we encourage you to attend, and if you have any questions about the event, you can see our website for more details. And Mayor, as you and the Council know, and the audience, from time to time, we present a business spotlight video highlighting an important business in our city. Of course, they're all important, but we try to highlight them throughout the year. And this evening, we have a video showcasing Flexing Gate, who opened up a new site in our city, and I draw your attention to the video screen before you.
Why did Sterling Heights look so attractive for this project, and what do you expect this location to look like in the future?
Well, this is actually, I want to say, our only non-manufacturing location.
Okay.
Everywhere else, we manufacture, and we've got staff. In Sterling Heights, we decided on Sterling Heights because we were outgrowing one of our facilities, and we needed more space for our engineering folks, research and development. And so, the building in Sterling Heights is dedicated just for that, administrative.
Administrative, engineering, procurement, research and development.
Mm-hmm.
What we have found is Sterling Heights, in terms of the number of engineers that we have working in the community, rates among one of the highest in the country for communities our size. And that's looking anywhere from New Mexico and California and down south, where we're looking at other communities that have either military installations that carry heavy engineering, other research and development footprints. Sterling Heights ranks, you know, at the top or in the top two or three.
Top 10, yeah.
And one of the good things about that is, what we saw was the average annual salary for an engineering position is around $96,000. So, that's a good wage job for the community. And I've always looked at it as, you know, having a nice balance. We have a lot of manufacturing in the community. With a lot of manufacturing comes a lot of tech jobs, comes a lot of engineering jobs, but also a good offset are those engineering and R&amp;D type of operations.
Yeah, and it's a need.
We talked a lot about our manufacturing sector in the city, but as Mr. Bonner stated, it is really good to see the engineering jobs in our community as well. A statistic that was not reported in the video is that the city of Sterling Heights has the highest number of engineers per capita of any city our size in the United States, which is pretty remarkable, but is a testament to the incredible amount of advanced manufacturing that we have in the city of Sterling Heights and along the entire Van Dyke-Mound corridor. So, we're glad to have Flexing Gate, and I appreciate the time to present the video. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda is a presentation, and this is to acknowledge and accept donations to the Sterling Fest Art and Music Fair in 2018 in the cumulative amount of $20,000. We have a presentation from our community relations director, Bridget Kozlowski. Mrs. Kozlowski.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of city council, Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kozchowski, and members of, or citizens of Sterling Heights. Every spring and summer, the community relations department reaches out to local businesses to seek their support of the city's summer festival, Sterling Fest. These donations help the city offset the cost of hosting Sterling Fest and also provide the company an excellent marketing opportunity to reach our more than 100,000 visitors over the three days. I'm proud to say that this year, we've received cumulatively so far, more than $80,000 in donations. This year, we did receive two very large donations of $10,000 each, one from Ford for $10,000, and a second from FCA for $10,000. Both Ford and FCA are home to major manufacturing operations in Sterling Heights, providing jobs for thousands of residents and members of our community. The city of Sterling Heights is extremely grateful for these two generous donations and will properly identify both companies at the festival with large signage as well as placement of their logos on our event T-shirts, marketing materials, brochure, and placement on the city website. In line with the city's newly established administrative policy and procedure order for contributions and donations, any donation at 10,000 or above must be accepted by city council. Given the busy summer season, representatives from Ford and FCA were not available to be here tonight, but both sent their best and said they plan to send many to Sterling Fest. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you very much, Mrs. Kozlowski. Council, we do have a suggested action.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Erko.
Resolve to acknowledge and accept donations of $10,000 each by FCA, US LLC, and Ford Motor Company to the 2018 Sterling Fest Art and Music Fair.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, Council, anyone else? Looking forward to Sterling Fest? It's coming up quickly, and, you know, with the new park this year, it promises to be one of the best, hopefully, ever. So, we're really excited about it. So, thank you to FCA and Ford Motor Company for their generous support. So, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing, and this is to consider the application by Eugene DiAgostini for a 35-unit, single-family residential plan unit development on the west side of Ryan Road, north of 19 Mile Road, PPCM-1192. We have a presentation from our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Vanderpool. As you know, Mr. Mayor, before you tonight is the consideration for planned unit development for those 35 different single-family residential units, and within our R-100 zoning district north of 19 Mile Road on the west side of Ryan Road itself. The PUD has proposed to facilitate the development of those single-family residential houses, which would be approximately 29 of them at about 2,200 square feet, and they would be developed on along a new public roadway, in terms of this configuration. An additional six units to the west side of the project, which would be developed as consistent with the homes that you would find in Timber Ridge subdivision, which is directly to the north of this particular project. The price points, and maybe the applicant can speak a little bit more to this, but based on initial conversations with them, was around the $400,000 mark in terms of the units themselves. They'd be two and a half bath, two attached garages, and well as two and three bedroom considerations, or bedroom configurations. The exterior elevations would incorporate a French country architectural design style. These would be the proposed 29 units, more similar type architecture for those particular units. The six units to the west side of the project, these are representative examples of what those would be along that west side and the connection to Timber Ridge subdivision themselves. The applicant is proposing these as part of their development agreement, as part of the PUD development agreement, so they will be locked into providing housing very similar to this. The 29 units will all look generally the same as these, very small deviations in terms of the building configuration, standardized landscaping, that would provide a detail on this configuration, landscaping around the base of the buildings themselves, multiple trees within the yards, as a standardized landscaping scheme, decker patio at the rear. And then, this is in addition to the landscaping that you can find along the roadway itself, as well as the supplemental landscaping that would abut the open space areas directly to the north of, north side of this project, as well as to the south side, and then ample landscaping along the Ryan Road frontage itself. The applicant worked really hard in terms of developing a scheme that would provide for the preservation of this woodland area, as many of you have probably seen this particular site. It is relatively wooded at this point, so the applicant wanted to try to preserve as much of that landscape and that wooded area as possible. So, they did that through several meetings, not only with the residents of this surrounding area, but also through the planning commission itself. The preservation area was once much smaller. The applicant worked very diligently in terms of trying to rework the plan, finding some space here and there, and ended up providing a pretty significant preservation and buffer area to the residents to the north. Since the time that the planning commission recommended approval of this at their May meeting, Clark Andrews from our attorney's office has been working incredibly hard on a PUD agreement with not only the applicant themselves, but also with the homeowners to the Timber Ridge subdivision to the north have also got a chance to take a look at the agreement. One of the main things with this is the detention pond that serves Timber Ridge. It's actually our pond, the city's pond, but provides detention and stormwater services to Timber Ridge right now. It's up in this northeast corner of the site. Will actually be expanded as part of this development to provide the stormwater facilities for this particular development. One of the concerns that were raised at the planning commission by the residents of Timber Ridge was exactly how is this pond going to be maintained? And through the hard work of not only the applicant, but also Clark Andrews, as well as the residents of Timber Ridge, the PUD agreement basically derives what seems to be a very fair representative agreement in terms of the maintenance overall for that pond. If you've driven past that pond, it's a very aesthetic pond. It's not your typical stormwater-type pond. The goal was always that that pond would be maintained in its current aesthetic and so forth, so the PUD agreement is drafted in a way that promotes that to occur. So, with that, again, this was recommended for approval by the planning commission in the 7-1 vote. There was one member absent, but with that, I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. See, the applicant is here, Mr. DiAgostini. Do you or your architect, engineer want to make a presentation?
Okay. My name is Jim Epping. I'm a land planner located in Clarkston, Michigan, and appreciate the opportunity to come back before your city, as Mr. McLeod mentioned tonight, representing Mr. DiAgostini. And we're very excited, proud, to be bringing this project to Sterling Heights, to the neighbors, and to the city. We'd like to start off thanking the neighbors. We've taken a lot of their time. They've participated in a very collaborative, open manner. We have enjoyed the conversations and recognize the fact that this will be a long project, and we're committed to continuing to be good neighbors, to working with the community, really from, you know, the beginning of this project all the way through the ribbon cutting and beyond that. So, we're committed to doing a quality job, both in construction, development, but most importantly, being good citizens and being good neighbors. To that point, I won't repeat all the points that Mr. McLeod pointed out, but suffice it to say, there has been a tremendous amount of detail that's gone into this plan thus far, from an engineering point of view, from an architecture point of view, from an access, road management, stormwater management. There really are a significant amount of details that have been covered and uncovered in great detail. We're really about halfway through the approval process. This is the public part of that, then translations, ideally if the board sees fit or the council sees fit, to your administrative staff, where we work closely with engineers and the planning department and so on. So, we've done perhaps more than is typical at this stage in terms of engineering and making sure that this is actually going to work. This is an important project. It has an impact, not only, of course, to this neighbor, to this property, but to the neighbors, and so we want to make sure we've got that right. We're confident that this works and works well, and we know that your engineering staff, right on up to the DEQ, will continue to be involved and make sure that before a shovel is put in the ground, everything works well. We are bringing two different types of housing to the community, 29 of which would be considered single-family detached condos. Mr. McLeod showed a picture of those. We're currently building this project up in Sterling Heights, and we're literally doing very, very well with it. We're selling these quickly to the community. The area is very excited about them. What we're seeing an awful lot of are people who have grown their families in the community, so families more than likely from Sterling Heights that are downsizing their big three, four, or five-bedroom homes and are moving to this area, maybe as snowbirds, but certainly as empty nesters. So, that's the majority of what we anticipate in the reserve court. The other six homes will be built along the existing streets and really just connecting that street. We're told, regardless of whether it was us developing this land or someone else, that that connection for Lake Forest would almost certainly happen in this configuration. Those homes will be very, very similar to the homes that are built in both adjacent neighborhoods. We've provided architectural guidelines. We would consider those to be custom homes, but you have and the community has the intent, the materials, the sizes, the proportions of what those homes will be. In terms of landscaping, we're committed to continue the beauty along Ryan Road. We've proposed landscaping, signage, birmingham, so it'll be, you know, add to the beauty that's out there. We are conducting a tree survey right now. We know that there'll be a significant amount of trees that are required to go back into the site. We're protecting that 50-foot buffer primarily on the north side, and we anticipate adding additional tree coverage to that which is shown in the landscape plan. So, again, it's an exciting project. We know it's going to be high-quality. We know it's going to be successful. We are here to answer all your questions, any of the community's questions. We have signed the PUD agreement, so from our point of view, we're ready to move forward, and we hope that you see so as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate that. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Yes, you, sir, in the back.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Paul Schwartz. I reside at 3806 Lone Pine Court, which is Lot 10 in the Timber Ridge subdivision. In addition to be a homeowner within the subdivision, I'm also association board member. Speaking as a homeowner of a property that abuts the proposed development of the reserve condos, we appreciated the two neighborhood meetings held by the developer, Mr. DiAgostini and Mr. Eppick, and where we're able to ask questions and share any concerns. The concerns and questions sent by me through email and speaking at the city planning commission prior to the approval of this proposed development on May 10th seem to have been addressed for the most part. One outstanding concern I do have is the management of the wetland water drainage that flows from the Timber Ridge subdivision between lots 10 and 11, which is through my side yard and my backyard, into the proposed development. I understand the city engineers will be responsible to work with the developer to ensure periodic water flow is properly managed to prevent any backup into the properties. Upon recent review of the planned unit development drafts, I submitted additional comments through an email to the city attorney and city planner directly, and they seem to have incorporated several of the suggestions into the current PUD, from what I can tell. Speaking as a Timber Ridge Subdivision Association Board Member, our board strived to collect and consolidate feedback from all our homeowners and worked with the city attorney and city planner and the developers team to respond to questions and resolve any concerns. One key item outstanding is the final resolution of the city retention pond ongoing maintenance and shared cost agreement between the reserve and the Timber Ridge subdivisions, which still needs to be worked out. Otherwise, our board is pleased with the direction the city and the developer are moving towards this proposed development. One last suggestion I have would be to investigate the repair of potholes and smooth out the concrete cracks on Lake Forest Drive, go through Timber Ridge prior to increased traffic that we're going to get when we connect those two streets together. It'll be nice to have that done before the traffic starts flowing. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item?
Good evening, council members. My name is Bruce Hambright. I live at 3938 Lake Forest Drive, Sterling Heights. I'm living in the Timber Ridge sub, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to emphasize what Mr. McLeod said about Clark Andrews. He did a great job, in my opinion, in working so hard on this putt agreement with Mr. DiAgostini. I had email correspondence with him and communication with him, and he worked very hard to try to cover our concerns. I also met with Mr. McLeod at his office, and he was very nice and very helpful also. It's just very refreshing to me to feel like that when you pay taxes, you're getting some representation for what you're paying for, and it's a good thing. As Mr. Schwartz said, there's still a lot of work to be done between our subdivision representatives and Mr. DiAgostini, but I also appreciate Mr. DiAgostini's flexibility in agreeing to the things that got into the putt agreement so far, and I'm really hoping that that cooperation and flexibility continues. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Doug Dinning. I'm a resident at 3770 Lake Forest Drive. I abut adjacent to Mr. Schwartz's property, and I'm on the north line of this. And this was a bit of a contentious matter that was before the planning commission, but through the services of Mr. Andrews and the concessions made by all of us in this regards, and I thank everyone, including Mr. DiAgostini, we were able to, for the folks on the north end, the south end of Timber Ridge, we were able to get a greater buffer. We were also able to get an agreement that's set forth on Page 6, Paragraph F of the PUD, of a contribution toward that pond maintenance to keep it as it is. Nobody's totally happy, but, you know, it's palatable, and as a lawyer for 40 years in this county, that's the way deals are usually struck. Everybody goes away with a little something, but nobody gets everything they wanted, and I think this deal represents that. And I thank Mr. McLeod for all his efforts and his meetings, and Mr. Andrews for having arbitrated this agreement to the palatability of everybody. So, I'll be welcoming Mr. DiAgostini as a neighbor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dinning. Anyone else on this item? If not, Council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Saroski.
Resolve to approve the application of Eugene DiAgostini for a planned unit development on approximately 10 acres of property situated on the west side of Ryan Road, north of 19 Mile, PPCM-1192, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the planned unit development agreement, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Mayor Tim Saroski.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Taylor. I have a couple of questions, and maybe Mr. McLeod could just be of assistance with that. Okay, so if you want, if you could just put back up the plat, the determination of plats, the renderings. Thank you. That. Yep. That. That one. So, I'm looking at where the pond is now, the pond, the retention pond that's been a little bit of contention, that's going to go, currently it's, so it's going to go right, yeah, thank you. So, go up a little bit. It's there right now. Where's the existing, show me the existing line, and then show me the new line.
So, basically, the existing line comes very close to this. This dark, heavy line is the property line between the two, between the two subdivisions or previous subdivision. So, this secondary darker line is the edge of the pond as it stands now.
Okay.
So, they are proposing to extend the pond down into what is the reserve property, basically to, just basically where this tree line is to be established with the landscaping along here.
And that's the tree buffer that we were...
And so, that's the supplemental plantings that go behind the units and then kind of tuck around the pond itself. So, the, keep in mind that that line doesn't necessarily represent water necessarily. That's the top ridge of the pond itself.
And is this pond fenced, or is it an open?
It's an open pond.
It's an open pond, okay. All right, very, that was a question, and then the, that would be Mr. Eppick, mentioned that you are currently building, you said Sterling Heights, but where are you currently building?
I'm sorry, we're currently building in Shelby Township on 25 Mile.
We assume that would be the S's main.
Project called The Enclave.
Enclave, yes, I've seen that. Okay, very good. So, I'm in full agreement of this. Thank you very much, Mr. Eppick. So, I will be voting yes, and that's, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Saroski, Mrs. Erko?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank Mr. DiAgostini for bringing this project to us. I think it's a great idea. Through the chair, though, to either Mr. DiAgostini or to Mr. McLeod, whoever can answer my question. Are there basements in these units, or just the original six, the 29, all of them? If somebody can answer that question?
All of the homes will have basements.
All of the homes will have basements? Okay, thank you. And other than that, I'm grateful that you reached out to the residents. You came to a nice compromise. Not everybody is happy, and not everybody's sad, but at least everybody can live together. But I think with, with the real estate market in Sterling Heights now, I think this is going to be, draw a lot of new people into the city and not just the people that are downsizing. So, I think it's a great idea, and thank you for bringing it to Sterling Heights.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Council, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. Through the chair to, you might as well speak. If we could have the renderings that are on the table, so I could reference those.
Please.
There we go. Okay, so, in these six homes that are Lake Forest Drive and extension of Lake Forest Drive, they appear to me to be larger, significantly larger. Is it just that the lot sizes are larger, or the homes are larger?
Both the lot sizes and the homes will be larger. So, those homes are consistent in size with the Timber Ridge lot size. It's R-100. It appears as though Timber Ridge was approved over here, I think it's an open, it's not an open space, but a slight shift in zoning, which allows them to be 90-foot lots by about 132 feet. Those will be the same-sized lots, actually a little bit larger just because of the pie-shaped on the curve. The homes will also be larger as well, so the same Timber Ridge and Lake Forest to the west.
Okay, so approximately what are those square footages and price points?
Gene, or Mike, can you help me out on the sizes of 2,500 to 3,000 square feet and 400 and up?
Okay, and if I'm not mistaken, the Timber Ridge subdivision has side entrance garages. Are we sticking with that for those six? Because the rendering of the smaller, the reserve, have front entrance garages.
You're exactly correct. So, the architectural guidelines, which will essentially set the guardrails for those six homes, specifically stipulate side-loaded garages, and they could accommodate a three-car garage, they could also do two, but well, all six of those will have side-loaded garages. The 29 will have front-loaded garages, two-car garages.
I think it's fantastic. They're beautiful renderings. I'm very pleased that Mr. DiAgostini was willing and able and working with our residents and the residents open to working with the developer as well. This is a win, win, I know everyone's not happy, but I think, you know, I think for the most part, everyone is, and I appreciate all the hard work along with our city attorneys and city planners. So, thank you very much, and I wish you well.
Thank you.
Council, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you. Mr. Eppick?
Yes, sir.
What is the plan as far as construction is concerned? When do you plan on starting, and are you going to do both projects at the same time, or do you plan on doing one first and then the other?
We're moving quickly already. We're already working with our engineers. We've engaged Tom DeHunt and Faisal Khan's offices, our engineers. We're already working with the engineering department here. I've already had a few meetings. So, the PUD agreement stipulates a time zone, a pretty rapid time zone, and we intend on meeting that. The market right now is very, very good, so... The market right now is very, very good, so we want to continue to ride on the success of Sterling Heights. We will build the roads in unison. Both roads will be built at the same time. Gene DiAgostini and his team, we're going to be building those 29 homes off of Ryan Court, off of Ryan, or I'm sorry, Reserve Court off of Ryan Road. We'll do those construction, and we'll start those really as soon as the roads and the infrastructure are approved, and of course, after we get our permits. The six homes off of Lake Forest, more than likely, will be sold as custom homes probably to a builder, and, and that builder would build those presumably, perhaps one model, but presumably as they sold those lots. There is a chance, although probably, you know, smaller than 50% that we may end up building those six, we are absolutely committed to building the 29.
Okay. As far as the pond is concerned, is that strictly runoff water, or is that spring-fed in any way?
I believe it's entirely runoff water, and it's interesting, it's city-owned. It really takes on, and it's kind of a smart city plan to have the more regional detention as opposed to every project. So that, that detention basin takes on a significant acreage off of the Ryan Road expansion several years ago. It takes all the water from Timber Ridge, and it will now take the 10 acres of runoff from our project. But it's not spring-fed. Someone had asked about the expansion of that detention. As we're getting further and further into the engineering, we think that we're going to have to expand that far less than we had shown, that it probably is going to remain more similar in shape and size to it is now. There may be some additional contouring, of course, we'll repair all that landscape and make it perfect.
Does that have a fountain?
It does have, the Timber Ridge folks currently have, I believe, one fountain, and through the PUD agreement, will continue to participate at a, essentially a percentage of lots over the two subdivisions.
That helps make the neighborhood beautiful.
It really is. It's a beautiful, beautiful pond.
One other request, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Is there a possibility that we could do the patching as requested on the road before construction starts?
Mr. Vanderpoel. Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Kowski, I've duly noted that, and we'll do whatever we can to get those scheduled sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, when we have these projects come up, I'm always concerned with how the residents feel about it, so I just wanted to thank the residents, the representatives of the residents that came out to give us their perspective, and also to Mr. DiAgostini for working with the residents to make sure that everybody's somewhat happy. I know that there were some issues that, that you guys are still, and I want to make sure that we, as a, as a city, that we're working through those issues that you guys are still concerned with, so I hope that that relationship continues. But it looks like a good, great project to me, and I'll be voting in favor. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Mr. Radke.
I looked at these plans, I think that they look excellent. It puts my little 1,400 square foot home in 500 mile Dodge Park to shame. I think they're going to be lovely homes. I like that we kind of have a mixed density use here. We kind of have something for everyone in Sterling Heights. I think that's going to be a tremendous asset to the city moving forward. I'll be voting in favor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your presentation tonight. I'll also be voting in favor. I do appreciate the work that you guys have done to work with the neighbors. It's obviously very important to them, and whenever you have a development going on right in your backyard, it's something that people take very seriously, so I appreciate that. You know, Frank and Mike, Mike, you know, met with me a long time ago just to let me know that, you know, whatever the neighbors need, we're going to do everything we can. Gene, obviously, your work speaks for itself, and Frank, you know, you guys have done a tremendous job putting together a plan here, and this is the second time in as many council meetings that we're getting really unique developments. This is another high-density or higher density than we're used to development that's coming in around the $200 per square foot price point, which we're really excited to see, I know I am at least, and I think it's a tremendous product, and I have been following The Enclave and, you know, how that's been progressing for you guys. And so we're excited to have this here and glad this looks like it's going to work out for you. So best of luck, and thank you for your investment in Sterling Heights. We do appreciate it. So with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congrats, good luck.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Moving on, next item on our agenda tonight is to consider adoption of a map amendment to zoning ordinance number 278 to conditionally rezoned property situated on the north side of Metropolitan Parkway east of Mound Road in Section 21 from M1 to C3, case number PG 18-0001. We have a presentation from our city planner, Chris McLeod, or at least it says we do. You want to say anything, or?
I have nothing new unless counsel has anything for me.
Okay, that's what I figured. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion. Mr. Radke.
Resolve to adopt the map amendment to zoning ordinance number 278 to conditionally rezoned property situated on the north side of Metropolitan Parkway east of Mound Road in Section 21 from M1 Light Industrial District to C3 General Business District, case number PG 18-0001, which the terms and conditions of the conditional rezoning agreement that the mayor, that the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to sign on behalf of the city.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
I think we covered it pretty well last time. Sounds like it's going to be a wonderful development for the city.
I agree. Anyone else, council? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? If not, thank you very much, sir, by the way, and congratulations and good luck. If not, council, we need a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kowski.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider adoption of a resolution authorizing placement of a charter, I'm sorry, there it goes. All right, to consider adoption of a resolution authorizing placement of a chart, oh, for goodness sake. Somebody's trying to, somebody's messing with me down there. All right, to consider adoption of a resolution authorizing placement of a charter amendment to Sections 13.03 and 13.04 of the city charter on the ballot for the November 6, 2018 general election. We have a presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. By way of background, the city charter was adopted on May 25, 1968, and became effective 50 years ago on July 1, 1968. Like any other well-managed organization, it's important incumbent upon city management to periodically assess whether its guiding principles are up to date and exemplify best practices. New laws, improved technology, changes in service delivery, and lapse of time are all examples of reasons to periodically review and amend a charter. As part of the city's visioning 2030 plan, city management is committed to presenting the city council with proposed charter amendments that will meaningfully update the city's guiding principles and continue the tradition of effective and efficient municipal governance. With that in mind, city administration believes that Chapter 13 of the charter should be amended to reflect the city's founding fathers' clear intention that significant purchases need to be approved by the city council. In 1968, the charter established $5,000 as the amount over which city council approval is required for public purchases. This amount has not been adjusted for inflation in over 50 years and has increasingly limited the efficiency of city departments, which must first seek approval for items that in 1968 would not have been required to be presented to and approved by the city council. The following illustrates the purchasing power of $5,000 50 years ago. In 1968, the average price of a vehicle purchased by the city was around $2,000. Price of a gallon of gas was 34 cents. The average price of a home was just under $15,000. The administrative purchasing authority intended by the city's forefathers was significant in 1968, but vastly eroded by inflation over the past 50 years. The equivalent amount of $5,000 in 1968 amounts to $36,000 today, adjusted for inflation. Recent survey conducted by the Michigan Municipal League indicates that the vast majority of cities across Michigan have updated their procedures to allow purchasing limitations to be adjusted by a duly adopted ordinance. It should be noted that the charter already provides that the city council shall, by a duly adopted ordinance, determine the amount of a public purchase over which competitive bidding is required. The proposed amendment, if approved in November 2018, will bring consistency to the city's purchasing practices. City attorney has prepared a resolution with which authorizes placing the ballot question before the electorate for consideration on November 6, 2018 general election. The ballot question, if approved, would delete Section 1303 and amend 1304 of the city charter to allow city council to update the current charter limitation for public purchases established in 1968 through a duly adopted ordinance to account for the inflationary increase in the cost of purchases over the past 50 years. For the resolution to be effective, city council must adopt the resolution by three-fifths vote. If adopted, resolution must then be sent to the governor and the attorney general for approval of the language. And I might add, the attorney general's office has already provided preliminary approval of the ballot question language that is attached to the e-PAC at this evening. It is important to note that this charter change, adjusting the administrative purchasing limit for inflation via an ordinance approved by the city council, will not decrease the city council's financial oversight responsibility. Purchases would still be approved through the annual budget adopted by the city council. In addition, city council would still review and approve all public purchases expenditures, regardless of the amount, through the bill listings submitted twice a month. Moreover, the controls in place within the administrative purchasing limit would still be in place. For example, multiple quotes would still be required for expenditures over $2,500. Competitive bidding would still be required for expenditures within the administrative limit, and the city's finance and budget director would still approve purchases. Having the ability to adjust the purchasing limit approved in 1968 for inflation simply creates the governmental efficiencies desired by the charter's forefathers. With the above in mind, I respectfully request that the mayor and city council adopt the resolution authorizing placement of a charter amendment to Sections 1303 and 1304 of the city charter on the ballot for the November 6, 2018 general election. And Mayor, I'd be happy to address any questions you or the city council may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
For discussion. Resolve to adopt the resolution authorizing placement of a charter amendment to Sections 1303 and 1304 of the city charter on the ballot for the November 6, 2018 general election.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Zarco.
Well, first of all, I will speak, but then can I have a second turn if something else comes into mind? I'm just asking ahead of time.
I have no problem with that. Let's see how it goes.
All right. We'll see how it goes. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Give me an example of what we do now and how putting this on the ballot, and if it passes, how it will make administration more efficient.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, it's a very good question. Right now, we, we have to competitively bid anything over $10,000, and we must also bring that to city council for approval. So any purchases, with the exception of professional services, do not have to be competitively bid, but anything over $10,000, we bring to the city council for approval. But as I noted, that does create a governmental inefficiency, because what we, we have to bring many more items to the city council's approval, for your approval, than what we would have been bringing to you, say, back in 1968, for example. So there are at least 50 additional items at, at a manpower cost of at least $100,000 annually to prepare those additional items to bring to you as a result of inflationary cost increases. In the past, we would have been able to handle those purchases administratively through an informal process, but nonetheless, a rigorous process. We estimate that it takes about 10 man-hours, if you will, very conservatively, to go through these items to just formally get them ready for the city council agenda, and there's a plethora of reviews that have to occur, not only the purchasing manager, but the city attorney, the assistant city manager, the finance director, and, and the department director for which the expenditure is applicable. So again, this would create the efficiency and allow many of those purchases to be handled administratively through a very rigorous control process in place.
Okay, thank you. And then I have, the other question would be, and we thought about, first of all, whatever we put on the ballot, I want it to succeed, so I want to make sure that we have the right language on the ballot to bring success to this amendment, or to this charter change. So through the chair to either Mr. Vanderpoel or Mr. Koshubsky, if you could explain to us why putting it on the ballot as written is beneficial over putting a certain dollar amount in that ballot proposal?
Sure.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Zarco, I'll take a stab at it, but I'm sure the city attorney will want to fill in some of the legal details. First, we debated this extensively internally, whether or not we should recommend a specific amount be included in the charter amendment over an ordinance that the city council would adopt. First, we, this is consistent with the existing practice. In 1989, there was a charter amendment that allowed city council to adopt an ordinance establishing a competitive bidding threshold, and that charter amendment was approved, and subsequently, the city council adopted an ordinance establishing that limit at $10,000. So this would be consistent with that past practice. I will say also, including a specific amount in a charter that is very inflexible can be problematic. I mean, you, charters are difficult to amend, and, and they're anything but flexible. So specific amounts, you could include an escalator, for example, that would be something we would recommend if city council chose to put an inflationary adjustment in a specific amount in the charter. But the problem I would foresee with that is that that then would be difficult to amend. Like, for example, right now, inflation is very controllable. It's in the, for the past 10 years, has been averaging less than 2%. I mean, it, it's slowly starting to go up, but if it did go up to the days where, you know, inflation decades ago was, was double-digit numbers, and I'm not sure you would want those sorts of increases occurring then in the administrative purchasing limit, should that ever occur again. And so the problem with including specific numbers in the charter is it just doesn't give the city council and the community the flexibility to adjust if you need to in the future. You'd have to go back out to a vote of the people to amend the charter and make that necessary adjustment. And I will say, finally, including the amount in an ordinance is consistent with best practice. When we surveyed the communities around the state, as I, I think I mentioned a number, I just said the vast majority, but it was, it was in the near a couple hundred communities that have adopted an ordinance establishing a purchasing threshold rather than including it in their charter. So just in summary, you know, when you look at the, our national constitution, or you look at the state constitution, or you look at a county charter, city charter, establishing any dollar amount in any of those documents does create a problem in the future because of inflation, of course, and it, it does become difficult to control.
So if I understand this, putting this on... So, if I understand this, putting this on the ballot and making it an ordinance would actually give the sitting council, any council, whether it be this one, the responsibility to monitor that ordinance, to make sure that the figures in that ordinance were probably comparable to whatever was going on in the economy?
That's exactly right, Councilman Zarco. And in fact, if you saw that inflation was getting too high, and you wanted to limit that administrative authority to something less than inflation, it would give you the ability to modify that ordinance with relative ease, and also would provide the community input through the public hearing process of that. So, therein is the flexibility that would be provided. And again, I think that's why it was done that way 30 years ago in 1989 for the competitive bidding limit.
Okay. So, this doesn't mean that administration is going to have free rein over spending money. I guess would probably be what I want residents to know, that's not what this is about. So, like I said, no matter how we do this, I want to make sure that it succeeds. So, so far, you've explained everything to where I understand it, and I hope we'll be able to convey that message to the residents when it comes to voting on this. So, no further questions now.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anyone else? Any discussion on this item? Mrs. Koski.
Thank you. I don't know who to direct this to, probably city attorney. We had a discussion in regard to 13.03 and 13.04. The objective of making this change is because of the cost and the burden that it puts on our directors in preparing a purchase for council approval. And it reads, "Until drawings, profiles, and estimates of the same have been submitted to the council and approved by it, and a copy therefore shall remain on file with the office of the clerk." And you plan on changing that, requiring council approval, and their supporting documentation, drawing, profiles, and cost estimate shall be reviewed by the city manager prior to public improvements, contracts, and material purchases being submitted to council for approval. So, what you're saying is you're deleting 13.03 to eliminate the need for the director or whoever is requesting the purchase to prepare additional information for council, but yet they're going to prepare a smaller summary of the purchase for the city manager. Am I correct, or did I misunderstand?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I would ask the city attorney to respond.
Mr. Kachubski.
Thank you, Mayor. To respond to that, so, the idea behind that is that when preparations are made, there's always going to be this oversight underlying these purchases. There's always going to be a city manager oversight. There's always going to be the budgeting director's oversight. So, that information still needs to be produced and provided on a, maybe not less formal basis. Things that are going to city council are prepared and run through a much more formal process than what city manager would be reviewing. So, for example, right now, if someone is coming, if one of our department heads is coming with a proposal for a purchase that's over $10,000, that has to be prepared in a memorandum format, has to be edited, has to be provided through a gamut of approvals, including me, the city manager, the budget and finance director, and through the department heads. So, that cuts that process down significantly, and that's why we would do it that way, so that the city manager has that information and is given that information, but it's on a much less formal basis, is what would otherwise be necessary for council.
So, if we change this to have a dollar amount, like $25,000, that means Parks and Rec wants to make a purchase. If the purchase is under $25,000, he doesn't have to prepare any of this information. He just submits his request to purchasing, gets it authorized, goes out and makes a purchase.
Well, again, it would be, who wants it?
You want it, Mr. Kachubski?
Sure. Again, the city manager would be receiving more information than just, I want to purchase something. What he would do is come forward with his proposal to the city manager. It's not on a two-week interval. It's something that can be done more expeditiously. City manager can weigh those decisions. The budget and finance director will make sure that it's within the budgeting process the city council has already provided for, and it would make sure that those controls are still in place. It would not have to come, though, on a two-week council process.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Koski, just to add to that, the current process really wouldn't change internally. Right now, anything over $2,500 must receive quotes. So, the purchasing manager makes sure who's ever making that request produces at least three or four quotes, maybe more, if the purchasing manager so requires and he perhaps isn't satisfied. In addition, there is a competitive bidding process in place now at, established at $10,000. Now, we would expect, if the purchasing limit was increased, that we might also propose that be increased, but it doesn't have to be. So, the competitive bidding limit right now is $10,000, and that would still have to occur. We would still go out for competitive bids unless city council chose to increase that amount. I don't know that you would do that. I don't know if I would recommend it, perhaps, but the reality is, we would still have to competitively bid items, which is another control. In addition to that, many of the items that we purchase, regardless of the amount, are sometimes, many times, purchased off of joint purchasing agreements with either the state of Michigan, the federal government, for example, and that could include office supplies, that could include ammunition, it could include vehicles, for example, that even though it may be under the purchasing threshold, which, whatever the amount may be established by city council in the ordinance as proposed this evening, even though it be under that amount, we would still be getting a competitive bid through the cooperative purchasing agreement. So, in almost all cases, we're still getting very good pricing. We have very strict control on purchases, and we're getting very competitive rates.
I guess I'm not making myself clear. I'm talking about how are we going to save time and effort and cost for the directors when they want to purchase something? What I understood, the purpose of increasing this amount was to relieve some of the burden that is put on the directors when they're requesting a purchase. I'm saying, if the purchase was increased from $5,000 to $25,000 for council approval, how does that help the director save time and expense? I recall a hearing, we spend $100,000 a year in manpower preparation to bring these items to council. What am I missing?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Koski, that is, as Mr. Kachubski explained, the process that we would save. Right now, when we prepare an agenda statement, whether it's a purchase or any agenda statement, it goes through a considerable amount of review time just for the formality of it, just to get it before city council for your review and formal consideration. So, we spend a lot of time, a significant amount of manpower and resources, to make sure that what you have before you in a public meeting is, all the i's are dotted and t's crossed with respect to the formality. We, it goes through countless reviews. Now, we could cut down those reviews, but, you know, you could have, you know, dates that perhaps would be wrong, and typos, you know, all sorts of administrative procedures that are required to present a public document for formal city council approval. Every agenda statement goes through a rigorous review process, in addition to the internal controls for purchasing that are in. And again, that goes back to the founding fathers' desire to eliminate those inefficiencies for purchases, you know, set at a certain limit or under a certain limit. That was a whole idea behind establishing a limit in 1968, and that's why all cities across the country have some sort of limit. Ours is unusually low.
Well, my suggestion would be to put a dollar amount in there, $20,000, $25,000, because I'm a firm believer in our job as, our fiduciary job to the people that elect us, the residents, that we let them know how their money is being spent, and the best way is at the council table. Yes, we do have our bills that are approved every meeting, so that's twice a month, but how many residents actually go through the bill listing? How many residents understand the listing? Because all it does is show who gets the money and how much. So, any project that we're doing is brought to council and is here at the table. If they want to know what's going on, all they have to do is listen to the council meeting. So, I'm in favor of setting a limit on it. Now, maybe we can put something in that charter where we can increase according to the rate of inflation, but there should be some limits there. I just don't want to give the impression that we're writing a blank check. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Koski. Anyone else, counsel? Nobody else, really?
Oh, Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Oh, I do have another question. Could with the dollar amount, through the chair to whoever wants to answer me, could the dollar amount actually be set in the ordinance?
Well, that's the point.
Instead of in the ballot proposal, the dollar amount would be set in the ordinance?
Yes. Mayor, what, and Councilman Zarco, if the charter amendment is approved, we would then have to bring forth an ordinance to the city council establishing the dollar limit threshold.
I have to say, when I sat down, I really thought we needed a dollar amount in the actual ballot proposal, but I can see, after listening to the presentations and the answers to my questions, how it could be just as effective putting it in the ordinance. So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke. You know, I have some real concerns about this, this proposal. I tend to favor what Ms. Koski is saying. I think that one of the residential duties, one of the duties we have to the residents here, fiduciary duties, is to review spending and make sure that it's transparent, well-bid, you know, and I know I've asked for more information on some of the things that have come through the consent agenda before, because I didn't see the backup material. If we were to raise, and I think maybe we should raise the limit, I'd be in favor of $15,000 or $20,000. I think that while that's not what the founding fathers had, they're not sitting at the table anymore either, and I think that if we were to do it that way, at least we're still paying attention. You know, $15,000 for our city might not be a lot. To the average resident, I guarantee you, it's a lot. They want to make sure their dollars are being spent wisely and fairly, you know, and especially when we think about, you know, the public corruption issues that have been in Macomb as of late, and how some other councils or some other council members have not been taking their fiduciary responsibilities properly, I think we need more oversight, not less. And I'm uncomfortable with writing that blank check, as you stated, Ms. Koski. Look at this really quick. I also think sending an ordinance to the residents that kind of says, we're taking the cap off, not providing any other cap, they're going to shoot it down. They're going to say, the council just wants to hide, you know, bids and paperwork. You know, they, you know, we already hear that complaint so often that we're just spending their money unwisely, and I think too often, they're going to say, we're hiding what we're doing. I want to be as transparent as possible, and I take it very seriously, making sure that when we spend money, we spend it the best way possible. We bid it competitively, and we go with the lowest bidder. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Oh, yea, yea. Well, I'm comfortable that there's still checks and balances in place, and if this were to go to the voters and be approved, that an ordinance would have to be adopted with a dollar amount before anything would change. I'm just wondering, through the chair to Mr. Kachubski, just to kind of piggyback on Mrs. Koski. So, she's comfortable with a dollar amount, $20,000. Could we tack on, like the Headley, much like the Headley Amendment, in the assessments, with the annual rate of inflation or 2%, whichever is less? Could we do wording like that so that it's never going to go to the 10% if inflation goes up to 10%?
Mr. Kachubski.
Thank you. The answer to the question is, you could try to do that. It would be something we'd have to redraft and consider, and then get it approved by the state. That is something you can do by ordinance as well, so it's, you know, there's a lot of options for you on what you can do, whether you do it through an ordinance process or through the charter amendment. Again, like the Headley rolled back, and that has had a lot of controversy, but it's a.
I hated to mention the Headley.
It is something you could.
But it was an example of how the assessments are capped. So, in the ordinance, if we could put a cap on it to that effect, I would like that to be put into consideration, so it's not just carte blanche, whatever the inflation is, but, you know, whatever the inflation is, or up to 2%, whichever is less.
Sure. You could absolutely do that in an ordinance. A good example is the current ordinance on purchasing was adopted in 1989, and no one's changed it since. You can debate that issue and come up with the best ordinance possible. With a charter amendment, you go with what you propose.
And the residents also have another bite at the apple to talk about, you know, two bites of the apple for a new ordinance that we would put in place. I think every one of us that sits up here takes our city spending very seriously. So, you know, we're all looking at this, and we all have differences of opinion, but I think we are all just as diligent about how we spend our money at this table as the next person. So, I think with Mr. Vanderpoel's explanation tonight, that I would be comfortable with putting this on the ballot, but when we're looking at that ordinance, I think we need to be pretty specific, so. I have nothing further.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Mr. Shannon?
So, I'm just going to comment briefly, because not only will the residents have two bites of the apple, we'll have, we up here will have two bites of the apple. So, today, I'll vote in favor of it, just to proceed with the process of putting this on the ballot, but we actually have three weeks before our next council meeting, so I would call on residents to please contact me if you have any issues with this. I'd like, this is the first time I've heard our council members discuss their issues and what it is that they might be concerned with. So, I'll, that'll give us, you know, three weeks, the opportunity to speak with other council members, to speak with city administration, to have any, to answer any questions of our own. So, I'll vote in favor tonight to proceed with it, and then we'll see what happens three weeks from now. So, that's all.
This is not coming back in three weeks.
This is just.
It's a resolution, it's adopting a resolution to place this on the ballot. It's not an ordinance introduction.
Is that an introduction today?
No.
Then I read that wrong, then, I guess.
Yep.
Do you want another?
Comment.
Do you want another comment?
You want to say something?
Okay, so that was my mistake, but.
You want to postpone.
I would love the opportunity to postpone, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Surovsky.
Yeah. Are you done?
I'm done. Thank you.
I happen to agree with Councilman Shannon, and although I understand that we have the opportunity, these two bites of the apple, it's, you know, the vernacular for a lot of government offices to say that, but the citizens still are going to be concerned about how we spend their dollars. So, I would like to see what they have to say about it before we just carte blanche, say, sure, throw this on the ballot. I agree that it needs to be. I agree that it needs to be rethought. This is the first, you know, we got this last week, but this is our first discussion of the wording for the ballot. And all of our discussions are always in public, but I want, I think we need more discussion on this before we proceed. So I'm going to be voting for postponement.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. Radke.
If we're redraft, if we do in fact go forward and redraft this, could we redraft a couple of different versions or is there only one version going forward?
I don't know. Mr. Koszybski, let me ask a question, a couple of questions on that, in that regard. Do you need to get state approval of what we have proposed tonight? And if we were to change, would we need to get state approval on that before we could vote to authorize it? How does that process work?
Sure.
And to Mr., to answer Mr. Radke's question.
Sure. So we do have to submit to the state attorney general the ballot question so they approve that. And then the governor reviews it and also will tell us whether they approve it. If the governor doesn't approve it, you still have an opportunity to approve what he rejected and move forward anyway by another three-fifths vote to move it forward on the charter process. With respect to drafting up alternative language, at this point, whatever we do, we have to submit to the state. So whether, I, we have preapproval on this language now.
Right.
If we were to try to change it and do something differently, we would strive to do that again?
I'm just curious if an A or a B, because I guess for me, I would vote for a hard limit. I wouldn't vote for the 2% increase Headley. I want a hard limit. So if it was a choice between the two of them, I'd vote yes on one and no on the other. So that's why I prefer to have two different versions, because I know how I would go forward with that.
We're looking for consensus of counsel in some direction. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Koszybski. Mrs. Kosky?
Question, can we do a valid proposal with a limit of 20,000, 25,000? And assuming that that is then approved, then create an ordinance that would adjust that to the rate of inflation? Or does that valid question have to have something in it that refers to a, the ability of creating an ordinance to adjust for inflation?
Mr. Koszybski?
Thank you, Councilman Kosky. So the answer to that question is yes. You'd have to have an authorization within the charter to create an ordinance to do that. So without that, you're stuck with whatever's in the charter. And if there isn't language that allows for it to be adjusted through an ordinance process, you don't have an ordinance process that you can adopt.
I would request then that if this gets postponed and it gets brought to us, brought back to us, that you create a valid question with a 20,000 or 25,000 limit with that clause for increased rate of inflation. And I don't know, in your opinion, use your best judgment, whether that would be like every year, every five years, every 10 years? Something so that council would be, the then council would be made aware, it's time to look at this, it's time to adjust for rate of inflation.
I.
Can you do that?
I really can't give you a definitive answer other than to state that whatever.
Can you work on it?
Yes, of course. Whatever we will have to do, we'll have to pass muster with respect to identifying how that is going to be calculated, when it's going to be calculated. And I'm not certain how well that'll work in a charter provision, but it's something we can work on.
You're a genius.
If we overcomplicate it, though, the voters are going to reject.
Mayor Taylor?
Hold on. All right. Please ask for the floor before speaking. Mr. Shannon?
So just to kind of go a little bit further, I'm not against this proposal at all. And I was, it's my mistake that I wasn't aware that this was an adoption of a resolution and not just an ordinance introduction or a ballot introduction, or how even, this is the first I've seen of these. So, but from what I understand is that this is almost just giving, putting it on the ballot to have the residents give the city council the opportunity to allow administration to increase that purchase amount. That, I mean, that's what it is, right?
It would be to allow council, not administration.
To allow council.
Council would set.
Set the limit for administration.
Right.
So we're just asking the residents, hey, do you think that it would be okay if the city council would do this to allow administration to, or I'm sorry, to allow the council to increase the amount that city administration could purchase without council approval? So if we decide that we, that it goes on the ballot, it passes, and then the city council has this exorbitant amount that they've allowed administration, 100,000, 150,000, whatever it might be, then we're held accountable to that. So we're still held accountable to whatever, what we would decide in the ordinance. And so all the details that we're talking about today is, would be worked out in the ordinance if the residents decided that it would be okay for city council to do this. So I just wanted to be clear that I'm not against this. It's just, I think that a little more time would be, would be better. I know that it may not be best for administration, but I think, I would like to hear more from the residents. This, a lot of, you know, we don't have too many in the audience this evening, but I would love to give the opportunity.
Obviously, very important topic for the residents to weigh in on. Not sure why they're not here right now weighing in on it. Mrs. Zarco?
Mayor Taylor? Okay. I certainly, what I think in my mind, the residents are going to be giving us their opinion in November when they vote on this. We can give them all the education they want before then, but it's our responsibility to come up with a decision to put on the ballot. That's our responsibility. Their responsibility is to whether they're going to approve it or vote it down. So first of all, I would not be in favor of postponing this. I think between now and November, we'll have a lot of discussion on how we're going to handle this in an ordinance. And if the residents decide that they don't want this to pass and they vote it down, the city is still going to function and will do it like we have in all of these years, that we just won't raise the limit. So to me, I would not postpone this tonight. But, and if it's brought up to postpone, I will be voting against it.
Okay. All right. I'm going to make a few comments now. So first of all, I think we need to keep sight on what we're doing here is giving the residents of the City of Sterling Heights the opportunity to directly weigh in on what they think should happen with their charter. This is ultimately, we're going to decide as a council what that language should say. And in my opinion, the language should be the least restrictive language possible in order for the residents to be able to make a decision where their hands are not tied. Now, what do I mean by that? If we put an amount, if we up here as a council debate an amount to put on as the new charter limit, then what we are essentially doing is elevating this council's judgment above the judgment of future councils and saying that the residents who elected us and the judgment that we have right now is superior to the judgment of councils that will serve in five years, in 10 years, in 25 years, and in 30 years. And I don't, as confident as I am in this group's abilities, I do not believe that we are mind readers. I don't think that we are, we can't see into the future. And try as hard as we might to pick a number that we think would be a good number, and try as hard as we might to come up with a mechanism that will adjust that number. Those are just substitutions for the judgment of future councils that are directly accountable to the voters. And so I believe that in order to give the voters the most say and to give them the most ability, that the best ability to directly influence what is going on up here at this council table, setting a hard number is the wrong idea. And I think that we're visiting this now because the number from 1968 no longer works. And we shouldn't confuse ourselves into thinking that the number that we select in 2018 is going to work. And I suppose somebody could say, well, yeah, but once it no longer works, then they can just vote on it again. But that's really not the way I think that representative government is supposed to work. We shouldn't just be having charter amendments every few years and/or every decade even to address the same issue. We have an elected city council that is responsible for dealing with a budget of over $200 million a year. And that's what we are elected to do. And each one of us takes that job seriously and does it to the best of our abilities. And whether the administrative limit on how much can be spent is 5,000 or 25,000 or 35,000, whatever it is that a, that this council determines, the process remains, as Mr. Vanderpool said, one whereby we have to adopt a budget. The budget is scrutinized. Spending is scrutinized at multiple levels. And if it does reach that threshold, then it comes to the city council. So if the residents, for example, in 20 years, believe that the number should be adjusted, then that council would be able to adjust it to a number that's appropriate. So, so while we are going through a lot of machinations here to decide, well, what should that number be? Should it be 15? Should it be 20? Should it be tie barred to inflation? Should it be the lesser of this or that? Or why don't we just let the council decide that in 25 years? If that's what the residents believe should happen. And obviously, maybe the residents think it should stay at the number in 1968. So that, that would be my preference, is to not connect it to a number, because we are, as I said at the outset of these comments, we are essentially elevating our judgment above the judgment of future councils, and I don't see why that would be appropriate. So I would, I would propose to continue with the ballot language as we have right now. I'm also opposed to a postponement, although regrettably, I may have to vote in favor of it. This needs five votes in order to pass. So if we don't have the votes, we don't have the votes. And I would, I would hate to see it just die on the vine. Mr. Koszybski, what are our time constraints with the November election coming up shortly? August 8th is after the primary election in about three months out. Do we have, do we have any time constraints to be concerned about here?
There are time constraints to be concerned about, but we would be able to postpone it to the next meeting in August if we needed to and still make our deadlines.
Okay. I would, I don't know. I find it curious to ask for a postponement in order to give the residents time to weigh in on it. We have four residents at the council meeting tonight, and it's been noticed like every other agenda item. And I don't see why we would elevate this issue above any other issue that comes before this council. This council deals with important issues every council meeting and every agenda item, I think, is important. And, you know, I've never, I've never heard before a, this council asked for a postponement in order to solicit responses from, from the public when not one member of the public came up to address this body about the proposal. It's been advertised as any other item has. So I don't see any need for the postponement. And as my colleague, Mrs. Zarco, stated, ultimately, the residents will be able to weigh in on this and in the most meaningful way that residents can weigh in on something, which is by voting at the ballot box. So I would be prepared to go forward with this, but, but seeing as there are at least two members that won't vote without a hard cap, and there are at least two members that won't vote for anything other than a postponement, I would entertain a motion at this time to postpone this item to the August 8th, 2018 council meeting.
Support.
I need a motion.
Okay. So do I need to?
Just say so moved.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported with no discussion. Mrs. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote on the motion to postpone?
On the motion to postpone, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarowski?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zarco?
No.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
No.
Okay. Motion passes five to two. This, this item is postponed to the August 8th council meeting. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider appointments to City of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, this is, there is one appointment. This is Mike Stickney has been nominated to the Board of Ordinance Appeals One, and we do have one suggested action.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Resolve to appoint Mike Stickney to the Board of Ordinance Appeals One to a term ending June 30th, 2020, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda tonight. Move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Jefferson?
My father always said, let the guests eat first. I always try to let the guests speak first, as the people who don't come down here a lot. But seeing since not a lot of them down here, I'll, because I have to speak first. First of all, I'd like to address something. Yes, I am a colored person, and I'm proud to be a colored person. With that being said, I'm under no, no presumption that a lot of white people like for a colored person to speak out for them. We know this because we got a person down here, the mayor. He had a whole rally against the colored president. So whatever, Linda Coman, we were speaking to her for last week, she does not understand the plight of colored people in this community. Because what this city council done over the last 10 months was a travesty towards colored people. With that being said, I'm, I'm just an everyday citizen. I'm just an everyday person. So I'm going to ask Nate Shannon. Nate Shannon, how you, that last consideration, how you going to explain that to the residents? We here now, we like to, because you guys could put out a steak dinner out there and the residents, they not going to understand what you guys just was considering. I don't know how this got to be a ballot vote. I don't know how the language is going to present this to the people of Sterling Heights to be put on the ballot. I, I just don't know. Because as we know, we have 135,000 residents here. 10% of them are going to vote. Less than that will understand that ballot item. So that's my point. I, I just don't know how you going to explain it to the people to get a solid consensus here on that vote. With that being said, also, I am an everyday person. I am an everyday citizen. Mr. Vanderpool, I have a question for you that's been raining throughout this community. People have been coming up and asking me and da, 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 da. So I'm going to ask you, who in the Sam Hill decided to mess with Hall Road, Mound, Van Dyke, DeQuinder, Shaner, Ryan, Big Beaver? Well, 16 mile road here. Canal, all at the same time? That, that makes no sense. I'm just going to get, just break it down for this. Could you just tell us who decided to, to mess with Van Dyke when they had already was doing Van Dyke, took a three-week vacation and came back? To the people, that makes no sense. And then you had Hall Road jacked up. You got Canal messed up. It, it made no sense. Why didn't they keep just doing it? Don't you guys, don't people talk to each other and say, listen, yeah, we can't? And then here's the funny thing, here's the funny thing. Funny thing on the mall, the gas prices went up. Don't you people talk to each other and say, listen here, listen, let's look out for the residents one time, one time? That, that, that just makes no, that didn't make any sense to anybody. And it's hundreds of thousands of people out there asking the same question. Thank you.
Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, move on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything?
Mayor, just quickly.
Mayor, just quickly, I know there is perhaps some frustration on road improvement projects. There is a lot of road projects going on. Needless to say, we have advertised all these road projects with a direct mailing that went to all the households throughout the community. We've had a num, we've had a number of neighborhood meetings informing residents of road work that's going to be going on in their area. There's simply no way to get all the work done this year without having some overlap. But we have held off on projects till others are completed. For example, 15 Mile Road just started this Monday, and we're waiting until Shaner was completed. We need to get that one done before school starts. 17 Mile Dodge Park Road in Utica, those will all be under construction after Sterlingfest. By then, we'll have some of the other projects winding down. But the reality is with very strong coordination with the county, MDOT, and the city, including surrounding cities, we do the best we can to stagger these projects, but we do have to get them done this construction season, which ends the end of November. Many of these projects will be going into November. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Koschubski, anything?
Nothing further tonight.
Okay. Council, open it up for reports or new business.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco.
I have good news. We know that when we made the decision to put the, the park millage on the ballot, we didn't know what was going to happen. We thought if it did pass, it would be awesome and we would be moving the city forward into the next 50 years. I have two comments that were made, one on, both of them social media and by real estate brokers. And the one that was made the night that we celebrated our 50th anniversary was a woman that sells real estate, usually in the Lake Orion, Oxford area. And her comment was, if you have children and are looking for a home, Sterling Heights is the place for you. New improvements to Dodge Park are geared for family fun. So that's somebody that hasn't even, you know, sell homes in our area. Another listing that was brought to my attention when I was at a party the other night, that is like, in, it's like Kensington Street, says, as they list all of the other amenities of the home, it says, close to the newly renovated Dodge Park that includes a splash pad, ice rink, farmer's market pavilion, new amphitheaters, sand volleyball courts, turf mini soccer fields, and much more. And I thought, again, it's this, the park is being listed as an amenity as far as in selling a home. So I guess we made the right decision as residents when we decided to do all these park improvements. So thank you again to the residents for helping us move the city forward in the next 50 years.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mrs. Zarco, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor? Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel, on 15 Mile, where the construction has started, the initial day of construction, the cones narrowed down 15 Mile westbound the right-hand lane. They narrowed it into, into the center lane or that left lane. Now, the cones have been moved, and I'm not sure who moved them, so that people can shoot down and make a right turn. So can you just have somebody look and see how it's really supposed to be? Because I'm not sure if residents moved it, which is very, very possible because they want to get to that right turn lane to get onto Shaner because the road rage has begun, or if engineering rethought how that lane should be closed.
Do you need a response or?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it.
Mrs. Saroski?
Sure. I'll take a stab. So again, I want to echo what Mrs. Zarco says. I had got the opportunity this week to have my granddaughter in town, and she's two and a half, and we took her over to the splash pad. And if you've ever taken a two and a half-year-old to someplace that they absolutely love, you know it's great and wonderful, and she had a fantastic time until we tried to take her home. She did not want to leave. And there were a lot of citizens, a lot of residents that are, that were there. It was packed. But they weren't just at the splash pad. They were all the way throughout that whole park. And I live right there by Dodge Park. I wa, I can walk here from my home. And the soccer field constantly has a lineup of teenage boys and girls, some adults, but mostly the teenagers out there trying to, you know, get in some soccer. I know World Cup kind of spurred a lot of it on, but these are still kids that love to play or they wouldn't be out there just trying it, stab at it for the first time. Basketball courts are filled. So this park is really, and like Mrs. Zarco said, thank you to the residents. I've lived here for almost 30 years, and I wish my kids could have experienced this, but I'm so glad I could bring my granddaughter. So it was wonderful, and I'm so glad to have been a part of it.
Mrs. Koski.
Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Can you tell us when the work will start on 17 Mile Road?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Koski, don't quote me, I'm going to have to follow up with council on this, but I do not believe it'll, well, I'm very certain it will not start before Sterlingfest. I believe it is going to start within the month of August, but I'll have to double-check that.
I was going to say, please wait until after Sterlingfest.
Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Radke.
I just have two, two things. One, without objection of my colleagues, I was hoping we could schedule a presentation on political yard signs for maybe our next meeting or the meeting after. We're in the middle of election season right now, and I see that people are putting them up. And one thing is, there's one in my subdivision on someone's house that's about eight feet long or six feet long. And it's, I want to make sure people know the rules because we had, last election, there was a lot of confusion because we had changed our ordinance. So I was hoping we could schedule a presentation on that.
Any objections? I think it's a, it's a fairly good idea, Mr. Koschubski. I don't know if you want to have it on here or if you can handle it, but if we could have an update on, you know, what's permissible on residential and commercial, that we did just go through a change and it might be beneficial to the residents to know what they're permitted to do and for the candidates as well. Another item?
Yes. And I just wanted to comment, I do appreciate this, this wonderful new park. I sat there the, last week and just watched so many kids play mini soccer and so many kids play basketball and people biking and running, and it really is amazing. And I just have to think that I wish that we could do the same thing in the 15 and a half mile relief drain. Because I think it would improve property values across the city. I think people would use it. It would be so useful. I think it'd be an amazing project. And I'm so sorry that Commissioner Miller decided to scrap it. Hopefully, if they see how well the new Dodge Park is being received, that we could maybe re-approach that project in the future. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I agree. Anyone else? If not, I will just say Sterlingfest is coming up. We will not have a meeting again until Sterlingfest or before Sterlingfest, so I hope to see you out there one week from this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We do have a great lineup. I'm very excited to see Sterlingfest at our new Dodge Park. I've gotten so many compliments and so many residents have come up thanking me, and I say, no, 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 thank you. Because really, it was, it passed by a razor-thin margin. And to, to think that it was that close to not passing is really remarkable because it's, in my opinion, one of the, one of the crown jewels of the park system throughout the entire state of Michigan. I think it really is impressive what's going on there. The splash pad has been so busy. You know, we, we have done more, we did more non-resident revenue in the first day than we projected we would receive in the entire year. So it's been, it's been, I don't want to say paying for itself just yet, but it's been wildly successful. And frankly, as I, as Mr. Radke said, it's a shame we don't have that park project going in at, on the drain. But it's given me hope that there are other things that we can do and we can be, I'm very optimistic about other parks and recreation initiatives throughout the city, giving residents and non-residents the ability to come out and use these amenities. And what the splash pad has shown me is that an aquatic option is highly desired here in Sterling Heights. And not only is it highly desirable and desired, it might just not be too, too inefficient from a cost perspective either. So we've got a lot of time to, to, to look at that and see what other options. We, we know that we have had residents who have complained that maybe the city, being the size it is, there could be other amenities on the southern side of the, the city. And, and so I'd, I'd love to look into that some more, and I can guarantee that we will be. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.